I got some books sent here. I was reading. I was like, I don't really care about one item on the agenda. So for the whole discussion about sanitation, which I didn't care about.
Nice. Thank you so much. Oh, my gosh. No problem.
No, I've only been here like twice.
It's one that.
Really recently we did it with a particular emphasis on.
Hey.
Hey. Hey, how are you?
Hi. Too bad they didn't recognize your announcement.
Testing one, two, three. Nisa, can you hear? Yes, we can hear you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, if you haven't already, I'll invite you to start to find your seat. We're going to start in just a moment. All right. Hello and good evening, everyone. It is seven o'clock on Tuesday, December 10th, 2024. We have an echo coming in.
Everybody mute their laptops.
Do we still have an echo? Yes. Echo, test one, two, three. I think we're okay now. Okay, great. Before we get going, Councilmember Flagler, do you have a request to make? Councilmember Flagler? Now, now she can't hear us.
Déjà vu.
Okay, Councilmember Flagler, can you hear us?
I can.
Okay. Before we get going, do you have a request you'd like to make?
I do, Mayor, thank you. I'm preparing remotely pursuant to AB 2449. Just pause because I'm not able to attend enforcement due to the fact that I'm not doing well.
Okay, then pursuant to AB 2449, I move that the council allow Councilmember Flagler to participate remotely.
Second.
So, Mayor, for coming in now.
Okay. There's the echo is also back. I wonder if maybe the Zoom TV needs to be muted? Like, like some, like, like pressing the mute button on the screen?
Vice Mayor Daley?
Yes.
Mayor Wyper.
Here.
Sorry, folks. We have done this before. I don't know why we're having a problem today. Testing one, two, three. Nisa, can you hear us? Okay. Can we please have a roll call vote on the motion to allow Councilmember Flagler to appear remotely?
Councilmember Flagler? That was a yes.
Okay, so, so motion passes unanimously and we have a quorum. Great.
And, and Mayor, she also needs to publicly disclose whether any individuals 18 years or older are present in the room at the remote location. And what is your relationship to those people if there are anyone in the room with you? You need to publicly disclose if there's anyone 18 years of older in the room with you and if there is someone in the room that is with you, the nature of their relationship with you. Is it a child or?
There's no one in the room. There's no one in the room with me that's 18 or older.
Thank you. Okay, now I would like to invite all of you, if you are able, to please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, the next item of business is changes to the order of the agenda. I am going to propose a change. I propose that we move the consent calendar until after item 11. Is there a second?
I can, I'll second that, Mayor.
Mayor, I had a quick question about that.
Oh, wait, the clerk is saying we can't move consent because the certification, number two, you could, you could.
We have to approve the certification before we could do the swearing in ceremony.
Okay, then we will go ahead. Vice Mayor.
I suggest we pull number two and handle it right now and then move the rest until after 11.
I will second that motion. So we'll do two now and if everything else till after number 11.
I had a question about that. So the consent items, because the new council member will be taking the seat. And then, then the, you're saying that the rest of the consent items will be, will be done upon by the new council? Is that because?
That, that's the motion that's on the table and has been seconded.
No, I'm asking a question, please. Correct?
That's the motion.
Okay.
You had to reorder the agenda. It needs to be by a motion.
Okay, so I think that the motion was to take two off consent, do it next, and move the rest of the consent calendar after item 11. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Meadows?
Aye.
Councilmember Liang?
I wanted to remove an item off the consent. So I did, before, I guess, the motion can be done, you also have to re...
There, there, there's a motion on the table. We're voting now.
I understand, but at this time as well, you normally ask the council, the current council, if there's anyone that, of the member of the council that would like to, you, you have a motion regarding consent calendar. And so I'd like to understand as well, clarify if, you know, items can still be pulled because we're discussing the consent calendar, and so...
So there, there's a motion on the table. If you want to move to take another item off consent after we have this motion, you can make that motion.
No, it would have to be a discussion before, because I think how it is, is, once the motion is made, it, you, it's not going to happen. But normally, when you take, it'll be considered in one motion, I understand, but normally, it says unless any member of council, it'll be considered in one motion unless any member of the council or audience wishes to remove an item for discussion. And I do wish to remove an item for discussion before you take, entertain your motion.
So I'm going to treat that as a point of order, where you're trying to outline that we're going in an irregular process. I'm going to overrule the point of order. There is a motion that has been seconded. We're in the middle of voting. If after this vote is taken, you then want to move to take something else off of the consent calendar, we can do, we'll do that motion as well. But I'd like to finish up the motion that is in process now. So it's a yes or a no or an abstain. We're waiting for your vote.
Oh, were you calling the vote? I didn't hear you say that. I didn't hear you call my name. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Because I was busy asking the question.
Councilmember Meadows voted yes, and Councilmember Liang.
Okay, I guess the way we're handling this tonight, I'm, it's an, it's a no because of the process.
Councilmember Flagler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Daley?
Yes.
Mayor Weinberg?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one, with Councilmember Liang opposed.
Thank you. Okay, does anyone else want to make a motion with relation to the, to the consent calendar?
Well, I did want to pull item seven, so I believe that I'm still in a, since we're still discussing consent calendar items, I am entitled to pull items, so...
You can, well, it, it's already been moved to after item 11. You can make a motion to pull item seven and have it discussed earlier. Is that the motion that you're making?
I'm not, I'm requesting to pull it earlier, but it should be pulled.
I'm sorry, that's out of order. We have already taken a vote to move the consent calendar to after item 11.
No.
If you want to make a, a motion to pull item seven, you can make that motion now.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to pull item seven.
Okay, is there a second?
Unfortunately, I won't be on this day as to, to, to explain why I had pulled it, and the concerns that I've heard, or people have raised regarding this agenda item, so I'm very disappointed in this manner.
Okay, not hearing a second to the motion, I believe that it dies. Next item of business is public comments on items not on the agenda. Madam City Clerk, do we have any?
I have one card so far. One card.
Okay, let's do three minutes.
Nancy Martin.
Hello, my name is Nancy Martin. I'm a Los Altos resident, and my off-topic comment tonight, excuse me, is for Councilwoman Eng on this last meeting of her term. Lynette, I'm here on behalf of myself, Teresa Morris, and all the, who had a scheduled conflict tonight, and all the people who have signed this card, and more.
Thank you.
We would like you to have these flowers as a token of our appreciation for all your years of service to Los Altos. We've always appreciated the way you carefully listened to the residents' requests and put them first when making a decision. We also appreciated your grace, oftentimes under fire, and your professionalism during the 16 years you've served on commissions and the city council. You will be missed, but we hope you will continue to work with the residents and the city. Thank you for all you've done for us, and good luck on, good luck on your road ahead. We're excited to see where you go next. So, these are for you.
Councilmember Liang, would you like to take a photograph with, with the presenter of the flowers?
Oh, that would be nice.
Maybe take it in front of the, I don't know if we can move the Zoom room. We do it in front of the logo? Okay, next, oh, are there any more public comments for items not on the agenda? Going once, going twice? Nope, okay. Next, we have two special items, and I have the honor of issuing my last two proclamations. It was my understanding that, that Congresswoman Eschew is going to try to call in. Is that still the plan or no? I'll take that as a no, so I will start with hers. Yeah, she is, we are expecting her to try to call in?
We see a hand up now, so we will bring the caller in. Just one moment.
Hi, Congresswoman, thank you for joining us tonight.
Well, thank you for having me with you this evening. I wish I could do the person, the House of Representatives, and, and keeping me here in DC to vote. So, I, I want to thank, I wanted to thank each one of you, and as I said, I wish it were in person. You, the Mayor Jonathan Weinberg, Vice Mayor Pete Daley, the council members, Nisa Flagler, and Sally Meadows. I want to congratulate Larry Lang on joining the city council and taking your oath of office tonight. That's very exciting. And I also want to recognize departing member Lynette Eng for her long and committed service to the community of Los Altos. You know, I, I served in, in local government for a decade before being elected to the Congress. So I know very well how important the work you do is, and I'm here with you tonight to thank you for your service to the community. It's been the honor of my lifetime to represent Los Altos in Congress for 32 years. When I was elected, I was the, the very first woman and the first Democrat in the history of our district to represent it. And I'm very proud of the bipartisan body of work. I've been able to accomplish, to help not only people from throughout our district, all the cities and towns, but also the entire country. I'm proud that during my 16 terms in Congress, five presidents have signed 68 of my bails into law, including legislation to create, that created two federal advanced research centers for biosafety and for medical cures. So my top priority for the handful of remaining days that Congress is in session this year is to fully fund the government, including securing the $480,000 that requested on behalf of Los Altos to improve safety to students walking or biking to school. Let me just close with this, with this thought. The seeds of democracy are planted right there in your chamber by each one of you and the public that comes to participate in the undertakings of the council. And when we have strong communities, and the work that you've done has been to continue building a stronger and better community, the stronger our country is and will be. So I thank you for your work on behalf of democracy, on behalf of the people of Los Altos, and to thank you again for choosing me to be your voice in the United States Congress. I also want to thank the staff of the, of the city, your, your manager, the entire team. Los Altos has always had first-rate professionals working to advance the, the agenda of the city council. I pay tribute to you for your excellent work over the years as well. So what a joy, what a privilege, what an honor to represent you. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart for your friendship, for all the advocacy work that you've done, and the partnership that we've had. It's been a beautiful one, and it will always represent a great blessing to me for the rest of my days. So, thank you. I couldn't mean it more.
Congresswoman, I know you couldn't see that, but I hope you heard the entire room was clapping. Thank you very much for your kind words. We wish you were here, but we certainly understand that duty calls. If you're able to stay on the line, I prepared a proclamation recognizing your service to the residents of Los Altos. And I would love to hear, for you to hear me read it. Wonderful. Whereas, for 32 years, Anna Eschew has represented the communities of Los Altos and Silicon Valley in Congress with distinction. Whereas, Anna Eschew formally served as a member of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors, and was the first woman to represent her Silicon Valley district in Congress. She is the first woman to chair the House Health Subcommittee. Whereas, Anna Eschew has served our community by making significant contributions in the areas of technology, healthcare, telecommunications, and environmental protection. Her role in expanding broadband access, her help in drafting, and her defense of the Affordable Care Act, her advocacy for consumer privacy, and her support for women's rights are key pillars of her legislative legacy. Anna Eschew's work in shaping policies that foster innovation, protect citizens' rights, and improve public health underscores not only her longstanding influence in Congress, but her dedication to serving the residents of Los Altos. Whereas, Anna Eschew is a problem solver, never afraid to reach across the aisle to find solutions. Whereas, Anna Eschew is a strong supporter of the Los Altos community. For many years, she has served as the guest emcee for the Los Altos Follies, frequently attended the State of the City event, and held the Congressional Art Challenge reception in Los Altos. Whereas, Anna Eschew is a champion for our youth. She has encouraged the development of young leaders through her internship program locally and in DC, annually conducted a student advisory board, and mentored young advocates to help develop our next generation of leaders. Now, therefore, I, Jonathan Weinberg, as Mayor of the City of Los Altos, do hereby proclaim the city's gratitude for the tireless work of United States Representative Anna Eschew in honor of the strides she took to fight for our community and lay the groundwork for our future leaders. Anna, thank you very, very much for your long and diligent and meaningful service to our community. I'm going to look to my colleagues to see if anyone else would like to say anything to the Congresswoman. Councilmember Meadows?
I'm just going to echo the, the thanks and leave it that, at that, Congresswoman. I, I'll miss you being there and for us in DC.
Councilmember Liang?
Congresswoman Eschew, thank you so much, and thank you for your service to the community. It was a pleasure visiting you when we had the national conference in, in Washington as well. So, and we appreciate all that you have done for, not only all of the, for your years of service as well as a supervisor and a council member, and so much more. So thank you again.
Vice Mayor?
Congresswoman, I remember vividly the year that you were elected. There was a lot going on in the world. It was the year of the women in, in our country in politics. It was when, you know, Anita Hill and Clarence Thomas were airing their issues. But you have been a leader not only for women ever since then, but for all of us. And I want to thank you, not just for myself, but for my kids and everybody else who's inheriting a better world because of the work that you've done. Thank you.
Councilmember Flagler? Yes.
But Congresswoman Eschew, thank you so much for your years of service on committee for our district and community. You know, we have so much admiration for you as a person and your leadership and how much you care about the community. And each of us personally have always admired you, and so thank you so much for all the support you have given us over the years. We will miss you, as Councilmember Meadows said, but we know you'll still be part of our community. So thank you so much.
Absolutely, and thank you.
Congresswoman, thank you again for joining us tonight. Thank you again for your service. We all truly appreciate you.
Your beautiful evening, each one of you, and the words that you've called will, will remain with you. They will remain with you. I cherish our friendship, I cherish our partnership, and we'll make our continued love to the United States of America and all our beautiful communities, all the, all the clemens of us, and continue to protect our truth. Thank you for a, such a memorable evening, my friend, from the bottom of my heart. I thank you.
Thank you.
And good night to everyone.
Good night. Okay, next I have a recognition, I have a proclamation recognizing Supervisor Joe Semidion's service to the residents of Los Altos. I think that the Board of Supervisors is in session tonight, but we have someone from his office. Hi! Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
So let me start by reading the proclamation. Whereas, for 12 years, Joe Semidion has ably served the community of Los Altos as our representative on the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors. Whereas Supervisor Semidion has also served his community as a council member, mayor, state assembly member, and state senator. Whereas Supervisor Semidion has a history of taking on tough problems and powerful interests. Joe has said no to fossil fuels to make a difference on climate. He has broken ground for fair and affordable housing, and he is an absolute advocate for women's reproductive rights. Whereas Supervisor Semidion convinced his colleagues on the Board of Supervisors to devote land in the city of Los Altos for the city's first all-affordable housing development at 330 Distel Circle. Whereas Supervisor Semidion worked tirelessly and at personal expense to close the Lehigh Cement Quarry, and has positioned the county to remediate the environmental damage caused by the quarry. Whereas Supervisor Semidion is always available for the residents of Los Altos, including holding office hours at the Los Altos Downtown Farmers Market. For many years, Joe presented advocacy tips to the lead program and other civic leadership groups. And whereas during his years of dedicated service, Supervisor Semidion advanced and advocated for regional economic opportunity, investments in critical infrastructure, and economic development throughout Santa Clara County, leading to a better quality of life and greater opportunity for our community. Now, therefore, I, Jonathan Weinberg, as Mayor of the City...
.................................................................................
Good evening. My name is Chris Senardi. I'm here on behalf of Supervisor Semidian first and foremost. He wanted me to express his deep gratitude and thanks to the city for this recognition. He has served in elected office for 41 years, and actually, the anniversary of that was last Friday, was the 41st anniversary occasion of when he was first sworn in, I think, as a school board member in Palo Alto. And he wanted me to mention that this evening because a portion of Los Altos is in the, actually, in the Palo Alto School District. He has actually represented Los Altos for 36 of his 41 years of elected service. And he has greatly, I know he would appreciate all of the wonderful things that you mentioned in the proclamation. He would probably add to the list a few other things, including the Lincoln Park and the home for the Chamber of Commerce, Loyola Bridge on the Expressway, a number of other projects on the Expressway. He will miss sidewalk office hours at your farmer's market. I can't guarantee you that he won't be out there next spring, but as a customer, not there with a card table, and he certainly won't have me there as staff or anybody else in our office. But in all sincerity, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, city manager, and then just to the residents of this lovely city, it has been Joe's honor and privilege to represent this community for the 36 years that he has had the privilege of doing so. And he thanks you greatly for the recognition this evening, wishes he could have been here. But one of the quirks of the 5th Supervisory District is there are nine small cities in it, which spreads him, he's one person, spreads him pretty thin. And so he's got a few of us in the office that help cover important events such as this. So he is here in spirit and thanks you sincerely for this recognition.
Thank you very much. Actually, can I invite you to come back up? I'd like to present the plaque to you, take a couple of photos. Would anyone else like to say anything on the record about Joe Semidian? Councilmember Flagler, I can go to you first this time if you want.
Mayor, just thanks from the bottom of our hearts for all his service, commitment, and contributions to Los Altos and the broader community. We love you, Joe, and we're going to miss you.
Councilmember Meadows?
I'll say ditto to what Councilmember Flagler said, and, you know, it's really amazing. He knows us all by our first names. That's why we call him Joe as well. Thank you, Joe.
Councilmember Liang?
Ditto again.
And Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to say thanks to Joe. He's been a good friend to me. He's been a good friend to our community. He has devoted his life to service, and he is an example, a shining example for all of us. So thank you, Joe.
All right. Thank you all. And with that, that brings us to item number two, which is to adopt a resolution accepting the certification of election results from the Santa Clara County Registry of Voters for the November 5, 2024 general municipal election. Let me start off by opening the floor for public comment. Do we have any comment cards?
We do not.
Okay. I think then, unless anyone on council has any questions, we can take a motion.
I move we accept the certified results of the 2024 election.
I second the motion to adopt the resolution.
Councilmember Flagler?
Yes.
Councilmember Liang?
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Daley?
Yes.
Mayor Weinberg?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you all. That brings us to item number 11, council reorganization. Let me begin by again opening the floor to members of the public. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, we have five speaker cards.
All right, let's do three minutes each, please.
Chris Senard? I don't know if she... Yes.
Good evening, Chris Senardi, on behalf of Supervisor Semidian. I will be nowhere near three minutes. This proclamation, here to present it on behalf of Supervisor Semidian to the outgoing council member, to thank her for her years of service and dedication to the community. It was adopted by the full Board of Supervisors. It was not a close vote. It was unanimous, just to allay any fears. It was in action this morning at the Board's last meeting of the year, and I know it was Joe's honor to put this in and have this recognition for you on the behalf of the Board of Supervisors. So congratulations and best wishes.
Isabel Augustine?
I'm Isabel Augustine with Senator Becker's office, here with Elise Lester from Assembly Member Mark Berman's office. We are here to present a resolution on behalf of the California State Legislature, thanking Councilmember Lynette Liang for her service to the city of Los Altos and the greater community, and we really look forward to seeing how you continue to serve and provide for our community in the future. Thank you.
My name is John St. Clair III, and I am here on behalf of my wife, Lydia Koo, a council member and former mayor in Palo Alto. Lynette, she regrets not being able to be here tonight. She's in a policy and services meeting, so she apologizes for that, but she has asked me to read the following comments for our council member and former mayor, Lynette Liang. "Good evening, Councilmember Liang. It's been, it has been and continues to astonish me of your continued self-principled determination to represent your constituents and residents with true ethic and integrity even in times of adverse discrimination. Councilmember Liang, you have been true to your campaign message to represent and be the voice of the residents. Thank you for joining me to speak out on the absurdness of the state government taking over local land use and zoning without knowing and respecting the local municipalities' values. As I've campaigned in Los Altos for the State Assembly, residents voiced their concerns when it came to the impacts of noise, aesthetics, and public safety response due to all this, the state unfunded mandates for building housing. I believe you, Councilmember Liang, realize that with increased population, that also means increased budget of the salaries, pensions, and benefits for police, fire, and community services. But you, Councilmember Liang, always fought not only to preserve, but also to enhance your constituents' quality of life and to ensure budget discipline, financial prudence, and economic accountability. Thank you for your service. You are brave, and as the saying goes, 'She who is brave is free.' You go, girl."
The next speaker is Anita Anander?
Tonight, we rightly honor Lynette Liang for 16 years of service to our city. Reciting a list of her contributions would take longer than the time allotted to an individual speaker. Many happened because she didn't just propose, but had to do the implementation herself, our summer concert series, the senior center, and the recent health fair. And many things were her idea but were ignored or her contribution usurped by others as they took credit for her ideas. The importance of and placement of dog parks, locating friends of the library inside the library, the unnecessary cost overruns for our community center, the benefit and importance of placing the emergency operations center at the community center, the need for the replacement of the police station, the benefit of purchasing 999 Fremont and using it as a secondary police station, the failure of the city to collect on grant funds for certain projects, the long, long-delayed improvements to Grant Park, I could go on. These were ideas that not only proved right, they are ideas that, had they been accepted at the time she proposed them, would have saved our city money and turmoil. No one has worked harder, studied more, or prepared more thoroughly to carry out her duties. For her diligence, she has been verbally abused, menaced, shut down, and ignored by current and former council members and staff. She has been cut off when others repeated themselves ad nauseam. She has been demeaned and subjected to treatment that she has endured with grace and without retaliation. No one has done more to represent the interest of all residents and yet experienced such abuse. I will forever appreciate what you did, Lynette, for your grace under fire, meeting after meeting, year after year. We owe you much. Thank you for always speaking for residents and for all you endured.
The next speaker is Roberta Phillips?
Hi, I'm Roberta Phillips, and I'm a resident of Los Altos for 32 years. And I'm here to thank Lynette and just let people know that we would not have the summer concert series if it wasn't for Lynette. She was on Parks and Recs for 11 years, and the first year, they said, sure, go do it yourself. By the second year, they said, okay, we'll do one and help you out a little bit. We would not have the senior center and the senior health fairs if it wasn't for Lynette. She has worked diligently to, every week, you know, serving lunches to seniors, making sure that they get to their medical appointments, and really caring about the residents of Los Altos. So I'm just here to thank her and hope that she continues her service, because I know that she will, to the residents, and hope that all of you appreciate this. She was on Parks and Recs for 11 years and on the city council for eight years, and she was the first Asian woman to be elected as mayor of Los Altos. So thank you, Lynette.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips.
The last speaker is Kitty Moore?
Good evening, Los Altos City Council and community members. I am Councilmember Kitty Moore from Cupertino, representing myself only, and I'm here to share some words about Councilmember Lynette, whom I've known for my past six years serving. I know that Lynette cares deeply about your community and has been an exemplary role model in her outside assignments representing your city. I've had the pleasure of serving with her on the Valley Transportation Authority Policy Advisory Committee, where she's advocated for smart transit solutions and housing for all income levels at the various transit opportunity development locations throughout the county. Some of our more innovative housing solutions are being built through the regional connections Lynette helped forge. Lynette's service on the Valley Water Commission and the Santa Clara Library District JPA has benefited not just your city, but our county, and she's ready to share her institutional knowledge, which improves regional goodwill and collaboration, like we've seen between Cupertino and Los Altos regarding the Lehigh Cement Plant. Lynette's extensive knowledge and experience makes her an excellent resource, and she always helps out, including things she does in her free time, like delivering groceries to seniors who need a little extra help, and activating the senior programs to build community. Lynette is the most genuine and sincere friend you could have. Los Altos and the region are very fortunate to have had your thoughtful, dedicated, and humble service. Thank you, Lynette, for all of your outstanding service.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you very much.
Madam City Clerk?
That was all.
Okay. Thank you, members of the public who all came up to speak tonight. With that, I will turn the floor over to Councilmember Liang for any remarks she'd like to make.
Thank you. Good evening. It is with immense gratitude and a full heart that I stand, that I sit before you today. As I reflect on my eight years of service to this remarkable community as a council member and as Los Altos's first female Asian mayor and council member, I am deeply humbled by the trust and support you have given me. Serving the city has been one of the greatest honors of my life, and I could not have done it without the unwavering encouragement of my family and the residents of Los Altos. Over these years, a lot has been accomplished, thanks to the collaboration and dedication of the council members. I had the pleasure to serve with. Together, we achieved significant milestones, including completion of a new community center, successfully navigating the challenges of the COVID-19 pandemic, and hiring a strong city manager, whose leadership has been instrumental in stabilizing our city's budget. Additionally, we have successfully recruited two exceptional female chiefs, one here tonight, who have brought stability and strength to our law enforcement department, ensuring our police department is well-positioned to serve this community with integrity and Transparency, public engagement, and the preservation of historic resources are core values that define Los Altos. They are priorities that I know matter deeply to this community, and they are essential to fostering trust, inclusivity, and a sense of belonging. Your voices, your history, and your active participation are what make Los Altos not just a place to live, but a home we all cherish. One area that requires our continued focus is ensuring the completion of critical public safety facilities, particularly the new police station. For too long, this essential project has been delayed and overshadowed by other initiatives that, while valuable, do not hold the same level of urgency or impact on the safety and well-being of our residents. It is vital that we remain steadfast in our commitment to this project, ensuring that funds are allocated responsibly and priorities are aligned with the core needs of our community. I hope that council will revisit the use of hybrid meetings to allow greater public participation, ensuring that every individual has an opportunity to contribute to our shared vision for Los Altos. vision for Los Altos. It's critical that we continue to prioritize senior services while also advocating for the needs of our preschool aid children, investing in the future while honoring the past. To my fellow residents and our city staff, thank you for your shared passion, goals, and commitment to making Los Altos a better place to live, work, and gather. Your dedication inspires me every day, and it has been a privilege to serve alongside you in this journey. As I look to the future, I have every confidence in the strength of this community. I know that the seeds we have planted together will continue to grow and thrive, much like our historic heritage apricot orchard, a living testament to the care, resilience, and vision of those who came before us. From the bottom of my heart, thank you for your trust, your partnership, and for the honor of serving this exceptional city. Let's continue to build the Los Altos we all envision together. Thank you so much.[678.23][678.23](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll now take a minute just to give a few remarks of my own. Being elected to the City Council has been one of the greatest honors of my professional life, and serving as your mayor has really been the pinnacle of that. People come up to me and they often say, "Jonathan, you have a career, you have a family, you're on council, now you're mayor. How do you do it all?" And the answer is that it's through sacrifice, but it's not my sacrifice. My wife and my kids, who I love very dearly, who are in the back right now standing and hate that I'm pointing at them because they don't like to be the center of attention, they're the ones that I've had to sacrifice. They're the ones that I've had to give up: their husband or their father, who hasn't been able to go to some sports games, who very often on weekends is going through dense packets instead of spending time with them. So first and foremost, I want to thank them for supporting me and for being behind me and for accepting the sacrifice that I've asked them very generously to make and which, deep in their hearts, they've been willing to for me. Thank you very much. I believe that the past year has been a successful year for the council, and it's not because of the mayor, it's because of the community. First and foremost, I want to thank my four colleagues on the City Council. We would not have had a successful a year, two years really, without all of us working together as a team. And it's not always easy, we don't always agree, there's a lot of hard issues, there's a lot of emotional issues that have to be dealt with. Sometimes we have people standing at this very podium, giving misinformation or revising history. We've had to sort through it all, and we've had to work together as a team. That team only works when it's a part of the community. We are a part of you, and you are a part of us. I am deeply appreciative that the community has given me another four years to serve as your representative, and I'm going to ask the community to continue to be involved. Because without your input, without you telling us what matters to you, we cannot continue to serve you. We need you to be a part of government, we need you to be involved in what's going on. Everyone on the council wants to hear from you, so please continue to be involved, please continue to let us know what matters, and please continue to give us the tools that we need to make sure that we are providing the best policy for you. And finally, I want to thank the city staff. I see so many staff members right now who I want to call out and thank for all the work that they have done. There are so many that we would not be able to leave tonight if I did that, but I want you to know that I personally have recognized all the very hard diligent work that you all have put in tonight. Mr. City Manager, I will call out you because you're the leader of everyone. I hope that you will echo my sentiment as representative of the entire council, that what staff does is noticed and is really appreciated. The council appreciates it, the community appreciates it, we're all a team together, the residents, the council, and the city staff. Thank you all.[891.13][891.13](APPLAUSE). Next item of business is the administration of oath of office to new council members.
I'm glad you're so eager, because I was going to call you first. Okay, this is going to be a while, because I've got a lot of these to do. We're going to administer the oath tonight to five people, starting with Councilmember Larry Lang. If you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Larry Lang.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.[988.26][988.26](APPLAUSE).
Yep. Next, if I can call, Councilmember Meadows, would you like me to administer for you up there?
But before that, Councilmember Liang, thank you again for your years of service.[1020.76][1020.76](APPLAUSE).
Right hand?
Councilmember Meadows, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Sally Meadows.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.[1136.26][1136.26](APPLAUSE). So we're doing photos later?
If you want to do them now, it's up to you.
Well, I don't know how much patience they have, so. Why don't we just do them now?
You're standing.
And I'm standing anyway, so, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, my son. Yeah, where are we going to go? Where's John? My husband, my daughter and her fiance, and my stepdaughter. We're missing one offspring.[1173.26][1173.26](APPLAUSE).
I'd like my wife and kids to be up here with me.
You sure can. I can give them the opportunity. Councilmember Weinberg, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jonathan David Weinberg.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.[1307.33][1307.33](APPLAUSE).
All right, so, the next item of business is remarks from new council members, and I guess that includes Sally and me, yes? Or, okay, I'm seeing a nodding head. I already gave my remarks, so I will look to Larry and Sally. Which of you would like to go first? Councilmember Lang.
Thank you, Mayor Weinberg. Well, good evening, fellow Los Altons and very respected staff and guests here. And I want to give a particular shout-out to the regulars at this meeting over there in the back. Appreciate you being here like we always appreciate having you here and look forward to seeing you at future meetings as well. Thank you all for being here as we begin our next chapter together. Now, many City Council members come up through the Planning Commission or Parks and Rec. I came up through the Historical Commission, and as a history buff, I know that the longest inauguration speech in American history was delivered by President William Henry Harrison over two hours in cold, driving rain. A month later, he was dead of pneumonia. Learning from history, I shall be brief. Here's another historical note. As Los Altos moves to district elections, I might be the last new City Council member elected by the entire city at large. This will serve as an important reminder to me, before every vote, to always consider what is best for our entire community. This evening, mostly I want to convey gratitude. Thank you. Here's Lynette. Okay, well, she can watch the video later. Thank you, Councilmember and former mayor Lynette Liang. We may not have agreed on everything, but we found common ground. We always shared a commitment to preserving our city's history and especially our heritage orchard. Her many years of service deserve our community's honor, and I thank her. Next, thank you to my new colleagues and fellow City Council members. Along the way, you offered me advice about how to run for office. You offered me advice about how to serve. Mostly, your advice was very astute, sometimes your advice was contradictory, but always your advice complied with the Brown Act, so we're off to a very good start. The prospect of working with such thoughtful and creative colleagues is so very exciting. Thank you in advance for your patience with this freshman council member. Also, thanks in advance to our amazing city staff. I'm already impressed by their experience and dedication, and I look forward to making sure that City Manager England's team has the required resources and clear priorities needed to continue delivering excellent service to Los Altos. To my family, my parents Frank and Pauline, watching from New Jersey, hi Mom, hi Dad, my children Susan, Ellen, and Joe, Joe here with us this evening, and especially my wife Catherine, you've supported me every step of the way. Well before I did, Catherine knew I should run for City Council. I like to think she always believed in my ability to serve our community, but maybe she just wanted me out of the house. Any, a little bit of both. Anyway, your love and companionship and good judgment are the center of my world. Thank you to those who encouraged me and supported my campaign in so many ways. And finally, to the residents of Los Altos, thank you for participating in candidate forums and opening your doors and sharing your thoughts when I came by. Those conversations reminded me that democracy thrives when we truly listen to each other. And speaking of democracy, let me conclude with these historical thoughts from Alexis de Tocqueville, a Frenchman who visited our young country around 1830. In his book Democracy in America, he observed, "Local assemblies of citizens constitute the strength of a free nation. Town meetings are to liberty what primary schools are to science. They bring it within the people's reach. They teach people how to use it and how to enjoy it. In our local assembly, in our free nation, I look forward to doing my very best to serve you. Thank you very much."[1608.83][1608.83](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, mayor. We, I'm going to use that as much as I can in the next 10 minutes. Or five, no, that's not a threat. So, for those of you who may be wondering why I'm standing, I had an unusual election season, and I was not actually sure I'd be up here again. In fact, I wasn't up here during part of, well, a lot of the election season, actually. And I've recently had back surgery, I'm recovering from that. So during the next months on the dais here, I will be standing periodically because my back will tell me so. And I've learned that sitting here for all the hours we do is actually not very healthy. Don't worry, I'm not claiming workers' compensation. Just a hint for a better chair. No. So, it's really an honor to be here. As I said, I wasn't sure I would be to, you know, to be serious, because I couldn't get out on knock-on doors. I know Councilmember Lang did a lot of doors, Mayor did as well, so. And the mayor did some on behalf of me, I believe, so thank you for that, Mayor Weinberg. It's an honor to serve all of you, and my first election was in elementary school, and I stood up and I told everyone I actually really didn't want to be up there, but my mother and the teacher made me run for student government, and guess what? I didn't win. So, I learned that you do it if you want to, if you really want to, and you commit yourself to serve. And I've done that. I've done that the last four years and in my eight years on commissions prior to that. So the whole point is, as my colleagues mentioned, to listen. And so for that, I should wrap up, because it's about listening to all of you. But I do not want to close without thanking my family, both those who are local and those who are not, but especially for coming tonight and putting up with me the last couple months, especially my husband who worked really hard to keep me healthy. It was in his own best interest to do so. So, so I will continue to work on your behalf, on our behalf, and please don't hesitate to reach out. I appreciate the vote of confidence. Thank you.[1777.33][1777.33](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, next order of business is to elect a new mayor. Councilmember Flyguard, do you have a motion to make?
I do, mayor. Thank you. I would like to elect Vice Mayor Pete Bailey as the next mayor of Los Altos. I would like to elect Vice Mayor Pete Daley as the next mayor of Los Altos.
Okay, do we need a roll call vote, or can we just do it by ayes and nays?
We could do a roll call vote if you would like, just to make it official.
Let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows.
Yes.
Councilmember Flagar. Vice Mayor Daley.
Yeah.
Mayor Weinberg.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so, I'll take over for the rest of the show tonight. And bear with me, I'm new to this. So the next thing we need to do is we need to elect a vice mayor, and I am going to take the privilege of nominating Nisa Flagar to be our vice mayor.
Second.
Councilmember Meadows.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Flagar. Councilmember Weinberg.
Yes.
Mayor Daley.
Absolutely.
Motion carries.
Vice Mayor Flagar, if you would like to make some remarks, now's the time.
Thank you, Mayor Daley. So first of all, congratulations, Mayor Daley, on your election to be the 2025 mayor of Los Altos. I am very excited to serve. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm excited to serve alongside you as your vice mayor, and I look forward to all that we will accomplish together as a council next year. I also want to extend congratulations to Councilmember Larry Lang and Councilmembers Weinberg and Meadows. I've served with Sally and Jonathan the last four years, and it's just been remarkable and a great experience. They're leaders, as you know, in our community and on council, and we're able to accomplish so many things together. And so it's wonderful having Larry join us on council and look forward to all five of us serving together. I do want to, I think I heard Lynette left, but I just want to quickly thank her for her steadfast public service over the last eight years. Lynette viewed her role as the voice of the residents, and she never wavered in that view or position. So really, thank you, Lynette, for all your work on behalf of residents, especially seniors. I have watched you advocate for many things over the years. At times, I have smiled to myself, watching your persistence, especially when you're successful in your advocacy. So I wish you all the best, and I'm sure you won't be a stranger. And then, of course, Mayor Weinberg wants to mayor always a mayor, so even though you will now be Councilmember Weinberg, going forward, you'll always be Mayor Weinberg in my mind. I just wanted to quickly say congratulations on a successful year. It's been an honor serving alongside you and sitting next to you the last year as mayor, watching you lead our council. You're a natural leader, as we know, very disciplined, who easily commands the room, and you're able to focus and guidance with ease and professionalism. And I've just admired watching how you deliberate on council, your process where you come to every meeting prepared. But you're also very open-minded, where you're willing to listen to everyone before you make your decision. And I think Councilmember Meadows may have said this last year at some point, where, you know, you have this ability to change your mind based on what you hear other councilmembers say. And just that willingness to be flexible and open-minded is remarkable, and I just want to thank you for that type of leadership. That aligns well with how much you care about the community and how much respect you have for the position as a councilmember and mayor, and wanting to do the right thing. You're thoughtful in your votes and the decisions you make because you want to make sure you're making the right decision, and you care about the impact it will have on the community. And I watch you right next to you, sitting to the right of you at every council meeting where you go through that process. And I just really want to thank you for that kind of leadership. I've learned a lot watching you and how you operate as mayor. You're just very thoughtful and disciplined. It's also been fun serving with you. I've enjoyed our back and forths, our ability to disagree while still respecting each other. You and I served on the Parks and Rec Commission together as chair, you were vice chair, and it was the same relationship, and I'm so happy it has continued. I even got used to how much you're a stickler for punctuality, wanting to start our meetings on time and not wanting to keep us late on council nights. Thank you for that. And, you know, I look forward to serving with you for the next four years, well, two years, I'm sorry, I'm termed out in two years. But really, I've enjoyed serving with you, Mayor Weinberg, and look forward to what we're gonna accomplish this coming year and beyond. So thank you for your service. I hope to continue serving our community alongside my, the mayor and councilmembers. And like the last six years, my focus will be on the community and what we can do to improve the quality of all the things that we treasure in Los Altos. And then work closely with staff and Mr. England to make sure that we're listening to the residents and making decisions that will obviously have the best outcome for our community and city. Thank you.
All right, now's the portion of the agenda where I get to make my remarks, so I'll keep it short. I do have some thanks that I need to say, for sure. I want to thank my family, I want to thank my daughter Emma and my youngest child Raven for their patience and as well for being my conscience on so many issues, you know? Young people have a way of seeing the heart of the matter. And I'm very appreciative, not only of my own children, but also of all the young people in our community that I've had an opportunity to work with over the years. There's a few more seasoned Los Altons that I would like to thank. I'd like to thank many of the former mayors who have mentored me and guided me. I want to thank my colleagues, I want to thank staff. And I also want to thank some of the electeds in other jurisdictions. I've had an opportunity to work with members of the school board, other councilmembers in neighboring communities like Cupertino and Mountain View and Los Altos Hills. And it's been a great honor to work with everybody. And I think you can all look forward to an even closer working relationship in the coming year. I want the residents to know that I'm gonna have office hours every council Tuesday. I will have office hours in the morning. I haven't figured out the schedule yet. Most likely, they'll start at Grant Park. And for all residents and all business owners or stakeholders of any type in Los Altos, I am at your service. My email's available on the city website, and I will sit down with you and have coffee and hear what you have to say and, you know, work with you to find solutions to any problems that you may have. I can't promise that I'm gonna have the solution, but I absolutely promise that I will sit down with you and listen to you. I want to thank all the friends that I see out in the audience as well. Thank you for coming tonight, thank you for being civically engaged. And now let's roll up our sleeves because, you know, the party's only gonna last for a little while longer, but the real work will continue.
Mayor.
Yes.
Prior to moving to the consent calendar, the clerk needs to administer an oath of office.
Yes.
I will start with you, Mayor, and then heads up Vice Mayor Flagar, I'm gonna give you an oath remotely. If you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I Pete Daley.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. Okay, Councilmember Flagar, if you could please raise your right hand, it looks like you're muted, if you could unmute. There you go, and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
I'm looking around, waiting for the mayor to talk, and it turns out it's me. Consent calendar. So, we removed item number two and dealt with that separately. At this time, are there any public comments on the consent calendar?
There are none, Mayor.
Okay. And Sally, I understand you have a statement you would like to make?
Thank you for the reminder, Mayor Daley. You didn't even flinch at that. Your new title. Okay, I do want to point out, I'm not asking to pull, but I want to make the statement that for item number 10, regarding 236 Eleanor Avenue, I do not have a conflict of interest, but I do live close. But I can view this matter objectively, and there's no reason to recuse. But I did want everyone to be aware that I am in the neighborly vicinity. Thank you.
Okay, so now I'll look to my colleagues for a motion to pass the.
Move to approve consent items one and three through 10 inclusive.
Second.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows.
Yes.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flagar. Mayor Daley.
Yes.
Motion carries.
May I just comment? If I may, just a very brief comment. I just wanted to thank staff for all the work you did in the transition so that I felt prepared to vote properly in that situation. So thank you, staff.
All right, now we have the last few informational items before we can move to the fun stuff and go have cupcakes. So, we've got item number 12, tentative council calendar and housing element update. Does staff have?
Just information only, Mayor.
Okay, got it. And then recognition of a proclamation presented to the Chamber of Commerce. This is also an informational item, so, okay. That being said, we are going to adjourn now to our beautiful community center and have some cupcakes and take pictures that we didn't get a chance to take and just have some general fun. So, thank you all, and I'll see everybody who can make it over there. Oh, oh, pins, yes. We have new city pins to celebrate downtown vitality. It's gonna be an exciting year for the downtown. There are a lot of items on our agenda pertaining to downtown, and so this will be a steady theme throughout the year. Is coming together to find solutions to move vitality forward downtown. And I'll see you all at the community center.
The meeting is adjourned.